We're going to go ahead and get started. Thank you all for coming tonight. I apologize for those of you all that didn't have to, but those who didn't have to, welcome. So we're going to go ahead and get started. We're going to start out with the annual update that we enjoy getting every year from Allen and the Barnes. This is for the City of Tipton Pension Plan Assessor. As you might remember, each year we meet with the retirement participants. Two o'clock we'll be at the retirement center. We've had a real nice visit over this afternoon. Had a lot of participation, a lot of good questions. And then we follow up with our annual meeting with the city council here. And so this is what I would like to review with you. This information is on your retirement account, of course, for your, for the City of Tipton Again, just for a little bit of background information, this is a fairly large pool of money, and it's a very important pool of money because this is what funds the retirement checks for those of you that are already retired and those that are anticipating retirement sometime in the future. So we have a form of investment policy summary that your retirement pension board approves. And this is just simply an other roadmap. It's a simple roadmap that allows us as the investment manager to know what the parameters are that we must stay within in investing this money. And it's very, very conservative. And the part that you might want to just look at here, an asset allocation, and that very simply just shows that we have the ability to go from 30% of the total account up to 55% in equities. We also have the ability to go from 25% to 50% of the total account in fixed income, and then we can go up to 20% cash if we feel like that the market dynamics, something uncertain going on in the world, something going on in the markets, that is a way that we can manage market risk is by simply taking money out of the markets and building up your cash position. This is probably the most important chart that we'll talk about today. What this simply shows is when we started in 1994, and we were visiting earlier today, did you say that we started with $18,000? But in 1994, the retirement account had $3,306,000 in that account. And as you can see over the years, the line has tended to trend up, and we have ended September 30 of 2013 at $18,40,115. And so it's very important that this line continue to go up a lot. For reasons one, it shows that the county's doing it. But number two, Chuck's job as the actuary, what we want to make sure of is we don't have the line jutting down along there because that could cause the city to have to make an extra funding into the retirement plan. So it's very important that we don't have a real lot of jags that the line literally trends up as it is doing at this point. These are some things that you probably know, but it's interesting to listen. These are just different events that have happened so far in the calendar year 2013 that we as investment managers and you as investors have had to take into consideration. You may remember we began the year with the last minute deal with the oil fiscal cliff. That was the Bush tax cuts coming to an end. Then February, we had a violent protest in Egypt, and it resulted in the president being opposed and the country declaring a state of emergency. Right after that, North Korea tested a third nuclear bomb, and the UN tried to post more sanctions. Congress completely failed to stop budget cuts, and the sequestration began. Right after that, the bombing in the Boston Marathon took place. You may remember there back in the spring. Then the anti-government protests spread throughout Turkey. Then the national security leaks led to a heavy government scrutiny. Then the IRS scandal began and was investigated by Congress. Russia then granted the fellow from CIA asylum in Moscow, and he had quite a bit of very sensitive information from CIA. Then the Syrian government accused of chemical weapon attacks, killing tens of thousands of people. We job reports in the latter part of the summer raised that the economy was actually improving at all. And then we had the government shutdown and the debt ceiling debate that, as you know, ended last night. The president's been on some of the business channels all day long today talking about, you know, what bad situation that it was and whether it was Republican or Democrats, whose fault it is. It was a terrible thing, and it certainly put a black eye on the United States. Hopefully it's temporary. The United States has had black eyes before. We've come through, and I think we'll come through again. But those are the things that we've had to, the clouds we've had to operate under as we have invested your money. This is an equity review that you can begin to read, and so I'm going to just tell you basically what that is talking about is that we are considered an active manager. All that simply means is that we are very sensitive to what's going on in financial markets, and we adjust your portfolios accordingly. And it's been very difficult for active managers because one of our primary jobs is to prevent you from having a big loss in this account. If you lose 30% of this account in a real market sell-off, it is very, very difficult to make that 30% back in the markets we're in nowadays and then grow it on top of that. So it's very important that we miss those times. Back in 2008, you may remember, the banks had the whole financial meltdown and the markets fell so dramatically. The market for that particular year was down over 30%. We were down a little less than 12%. So it's our job not only to grow this account, but it's a really important part of our job to protect it again. This is just simply our performance. And again, to refresh your memory, we're not on a calendar year, January through December. You're on a fiscal year that's basically June to June. So that's why we are showing the performance as of June 30th of 2012 through June 30th of 2013. What this shows is that your total account, that's your stocks, your bonds, and your cash, for that period of time is up 10.2%. The stocks in your account was up 27%, and the S&amp;P 500 index was up 20.59%, and fixed income was fairly flat. So we need lots and lots of years where we have this 10.2% return because that is what buffers those years when we may not have the 3% return because whatever might negatively be going on in the marketplace. Now this is just simply an update. This is just year to date, from January the 1st of 2013 through September the 30th of 2013. The total account's up 6.6%, excuse me, 7.6%. Equities are up 20, and S&amp;P's up 19.8. And again, the fixed income is slightly negative, but fairly flat at that particular, at that particular point. We still have the full fourth quarter to go. From a fiscal year, this is really just the first quarter. So anyway, that's just sort of what it looks like through September the 30th. This is the portfolio summary. Again, it's a June the 30th. It just simply takes that bar graph and turns it into numbers. And it shows here, as of June the 30th, we had $8,533,000 in stocks that represented 48.7% of that total pack, the total account, and the dividends that those stocks earned each, each year, $158,967. This is your fixed income. We have U.S. corporate bonds, U.S. government bonds, U.S. municipal bonds, U.S. agencies, and then these are the interest amounts that each one of those bonds provide. So at the end of the year, the portfolio generates $467,000 just in dividends and interest. Has nothing to do with the value of the account going up or down. This is just an income stream, the dividends and interest that these securities provide for the account. This is the pie chart showing the bottom there. The green, 49% of the account is in equities. The blue is 44%, that's your fixed income. And then 7% is the red, and that represents your cash. So we had $8,533,000 in equities, $7,795,000 in fixed income, and right at $1,200,000 in cash. That's a snapshot as of June the 30th. This is the fixed income, and as you can see, we have roughly $7,246,000 our value. That is the value that the bonds will mature at that point. The market value is actually $7,795,000. The cost was $7,562,000. So theoretically, on June the 30th, we could have sold all of our fixed income and had a net gain of $232,000. Well, then you say, well, that's no way, why don't you do that and make that money? Well, the difference is because the way this portfolio is structured, we're earning almost 4% on those bonds. If we sold those bonds and reinvested them in the current bond market, we may not even earn 2%. So we have to make the investment conscious decision that we'd rather earn that higher interest rate on this money rather than make the $232,000 gain and then have the risk of having to reinvest all that money at significantly lower interest rates. Again, you all know us pretty well, but we are located in Thomasville, and we have an office in Tallahassee. That's our office there. And we do, we have a park of the hills there in Tallahassee. We also have an office in St. Simon's Island, and we also have a representation of the firm in Charlotte, North Carolina. But the primary part of our business is done here in Thomasville, and the primary style of managing for our business is retirement accounts like the City of Tipton. You always must remember that this is the participants' money. This is not my own personal money. I can be as aggressive with my own personal money, and you can too if you want to. But when you're managing money for a couple hundred people, some of them may not be 25, 30 years old that's looking out 30 and 40 years to be able to retire versus those that have already retired and are dependent on their check coming each month. This is a pool of money that we have to be very, 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 very careful in how we manage. Very seldom will you see us just have a grand slam home run year. Very seldom will you see us even take a big, big loss. That's what a account like this just cannot suddenly produce, is that they can giant drawdowns. So we're very pleased to bring to you a 10% return. Again, as Chuck and I were talking earlier, that really, really counts because there have been some years going back to 2001 to where the total return was around 3%. And we have an actuarial rule that over long periods of time, we need to average seven three quarters. So a 10.2% year certainly helps out and sort of offsets some of those years that we didn't quite get there. So we are very pleased with where we are. We are managing this very, very carefully. We're so glad that our Congress and President was able to get together last night and get this whole thing handled. It was, so I made the sausage, it's pretty nasty to watch later, but I guess it tastes pretty good at the end. I think it would be nice to watch all that. Maybe it'll taste okay when we get finished with it. Anyway, it's been a real, real, real tough year to invest new money into, but that's where we are. And if there are any questions, I've covered a lot of territory. I think more than half of it. All right. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Rick.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Rick. Yes, sir. Were there any questions, Rick, on the retirement? Okay. If there's no questions, we're going to move on now to Chuck Carr. He's our actuary on the discussion.
Mayor, if you remember, back in August, Chuck came to us and we had a two or three hour session on the retirement fund, and we were basically trying to bring everybody up to speed on where we were and what was hot with the retirement fund. And after the presentation, sorry, I had enough out there. After the presentation, councilwoman, some alternatives to bring back and look at, and some estimates on what each alternative would cost the City of Tipton, and that's what she had before you, and I know that's still out there.
All right. So what, what you just received was, there's hopefully you got four pages. Did you get the four page version? Good, that looks like it. Okay. So two of the pages, this is sort of two different scenarios or two different approaches to the employee contribution. So there's a lot of numbers on here, but I show it both as dollars and then as a percentage of payroll. And so we'll just, since it's the top page, we'll just, I'll talk more about the dollars and the percent of payroll, but I try to give you both just in case you're interested. But the first two pages, I'm going to say that to make sure that's right, yes, the first two pages of the handout show the 15-year projection of these different alternatives, which we'll talk about in a second. But assuming that we get a 5% employee contribution for folks hired July 1 of '08 and later. And just as a reminder, before the plan freeze, we had a kind of a two-tiered plan. We had what we're going to call the old plan, which was really for people hired prior to July 1 of '08. And that plan did not have an employee contribution to it. But anyone hired under the so-called new plan back at that time, from July 1 of '08 forward up until 2010 when the plan was frozen, those folks had an employee contribution. So this, the first two pages of these projections would be putting back a 5% employee contribution just for that group hired July 1 of '08 and then later. The second two pages would be having a 5% employee contribution from all employees. Okay? Then you'll notice on any one sheet, there are six different columns of numbers. The left three columns of numbers are what I, I called it the realistic scenario. That's in quotes. Don't, don't place too much emphasis. You know, I, I had to call it something. And the right three, I called the pessimistic scenario. But what, what these are is it's a 15-year projection of the expected cost under different alternatives, which again, I'll talk about the different alternatives in a second. But the first three columns are valuing the plan, so to speak, and coming up with the contribution requirements, assuming that the investments earned 6 and 3/4% per year. Now Richard mentioned a minute ago, putting this aside, what we assume right now officially when I do the valuation every year and tell the city what the contribution requirement is, right now, we've been assuming a 7 and 3/4% investment return. But as have, I think, most if not all of you were here when I was here in August, and we talked about some of these alternatives. What came out of that meeting was, we all agreed it would be wise to analyze these alternatives using maybe what we would call like a little more realistic, maybe a little less optimistic or rosy scenario. And so that's why when I prepared this chart, I went back and looked at it assuming first of all, only 6 and 3/4%. Because to be honest with you, and Richard can disagree with me, I mean, I'm welcome to disagree if he does, but.
I agree with you.
But, but I think the 7 and 3/4% really is a long road to hope. And, and we've all been aware of that. The reason we haven't lowered that 7 and 3/4% officially yet is just because, you know, we really haven't been able to. I mean, it's been tough enough for the city to try to meet the contribution requirements for the frozen plan on that basis, never mind, you know, ponying up extra money if we were assuming something like 6 and 3/4. But we really ought to be thinking in terms of lowering that rate. We don't have to lower it all at once. We would, in fact, usually when you lower a rate like that, you do it piecemeal and try to say we're going to take a several year period, and we're going to lower it maybe a quarter percent a year, every year or two, and try to work our way down to that. And a great time to start doing that is actually coming off of a good investment year because you, when you have a year like this past year, when, when the pension fund return is more than we expected, that extra return, which in this case is going to be about 2.5% maybe, that extra 2.5% is a little bit like found money. So we can do a couple of things with that found money. We can either lower the city's contribution a little bit, because that's what, all other things being equal, that's what would happen when you come off of a good investment year. Or we can use it to maybe buy down the expectation of future earnings, you know, keep the city's contribution level, buy down, you know, tighten up on our assumption, be a little more conservative in how we value the plan. And that's maybe what we'll do. I haven't done the 2013 valuation yet, and we, you know, we'll see, but, so I don't know what the exact numbers are going to be, but, you know, this year may, may be a good year to start by trying to lower that. Nevertheless, when you are making a decision about thawing a plan like this, or, you know, trying to put back some of the benefits that we've had to freeze, I think we all agree it's wise to, to make that decision based on projections and so forth that are maybe a little bit more realistic in nature and that maybe represent where we are trying to get to as opposed to this rosier 7 and 3/4% assumption. So that's why, that's why the logic and why I did the 6 and 3/4. Now, the other thing we talked about was, just for fun and just so that we can see some even bigger numbers, what would happen if we had just kind of worst case, you know, if we really don't make a lot of money? So I just, just, you know, to have the numbers, I actually looked at a 4 and 3/4%. So I actually went 2% more off of that, and you can see how the numbers shoot up. I don't think that's very likely to happen, but I think it's good, you know, to know, you know, if things really, really go south, you know, we, we could end up, you know, with obviously a much higher contribution rate. But for this evening, you know, I'd say let's focus maybe on those first three columns that I presented of using the 6 and 3/4%. Let's, let's talk a little about the difference between these, these alternatives. When I was here in August, I had presented and explained that there's really a whole spectrum of options. I mean, there's not just a few. There's really as many as you could dream of. There's a lot of different ways you can thaw the plan, offer different groups, thaw it in different ways, you know. So what I did was I tried to kind of organize a spectrum of alternatives that sort of were some, what I think at least are some logical things you could do. At one end of the spectrum was what I call Alternative 1, which you've really, I guess Larry, Kurt, and Ron, but they've really already done Alternative 1, haven't they? Or at least informally?
Yes, sir. That was included in the budget resolution this year. City Council, when you adopted the budget, you actually thawed or unfroze the July 1st, 2008 plan, which was when the, that was the 5% mandatory contribution for anyone that hired after July 1st of 2008. That plan is now unthawed, and it's in effect. So anyone that falls under that category actually are now occurring benefits. Unfortunately, and that plan that we budgeted for was, it was $1.8 million with a $721,000 lump sum contribution to the unfunded liability account, in the account.
Yeah. The $700,000, by the way, was really, you know, the plan was frozen in 2010, and so when you thaw, I mean, one of the decisions to be made, of course, is what are we going to do with the last three years, you know? Because you could say, well, we're just going to thaw from this point forward, and then just, everybody's just going to lose those three years. Well, that's not the way that, what was adopted was to go back and thaw, give, give the folks who are going to get the additional credit, these so-called 2008 plan people, to give those three years of credit. That's what the $700,000 for a one-time deposit was intended, so that we don't fall behind. In other words, we can sort of make up that lost ground with a special deposit, and that was the intent or the idea there. But then there was, so that was what we call Alternative 1. I don't have that on here. The, when we met in August, we really focused on alternatives 2, 3, and 4. So Alternative 1 was kind of a one end of the spectrum. The other end of the spectrum, which was Alternative 4, would be just putting everything back exactly the way it was before. In other words, before the freeze, where the old, pre-2008 group, they would go back to the full accrual rate and everything with credit for the three years that they were missing and so forth. And not surprisingly, I mean, that's the most expensive choice that's, that's shown here. And then there's an alternative 2 and 3, which fall in between. Alternative 2 would still keep the 2010 benefits frozen for everyone, but then everyone would also begin, starting in 2010, would begin getting benefits under that 2008 plan. So the, the difference there, you know, for, for some of the folks, for the more recent hires, there's no difference between Alternative 1 and 2. But for your longer-term service employees, the difference between Alternative 1 and 2 is under Alternative 1, they're not really getting any benefit accrual because they're still effectively going to remain frozen. Under Alternative 2, they will also get that 2008 formula, you know, benefit accrual. So that's not as good as what they had before, but it's at least something. So they're at least earning something, you know, they're, they're not earning zero on their pension. Then Alternative 3 is a little bit of a mixture. What it does, it takes Alternative 2, and instead of keeping that old 2010 benefit frozen as far as the dollar amount, it would let that benefit go up as their average pay goes up. If you remember, both of these formulas, both the old plan formula, the 2008 formula, both those formulas are a percentage times service times final average pay. So without any freeze at all, someone who reaches the point of retirement, all of their years of service are multiplied by a percentage, and then it's multiplied by their average pay, which generally is their highest years right there close to retirement, I mean, for most people if you assume their pay goes up through their career. So what Alternative 3 does is it takes, it takes that 2010 benefit that otherwise would have been just frozen, the dollars, and it does let us go back and re-figure that using their final pay at the point of retirement. So that's obviously a more expensive approach than just keeping it frozen. So it sort of falls between, Alternative 3 falls between 2 and 4. Let's, let's talk about Alternative 2 for just a minute.
Let me ask you this.
Sure.
Do you have those descriptions written out somewhere?
I do, and it's actually, it's in small print at the bottom of this.
Is it small? I have it just.
Yeah, it is.
I see.
It's, it's, and this, you know, my space is obviously limited, so this is about as, about as concise as I can get it, but yeah. It gives you just a, yeah, in a quick snapshot. I don't know if you all remember, but as we were coming up on the freeze, you know, before the plan was frozen, the required contribution, this was for the old full-blown plan, the required contribution was around 2.4 million, if I remember right. That again was figured at the 7 and 3/4% investment assumption. So, you know, you, you were basically at that time faced with, with, you know, and it was, it was a number that was expected to continue to increase. So you were at that time looking at, at, you know, 2.5 million, give or take, with an increase in contribution. And that was at that time, three years ago, was, was obviously decided to be just more than a city could handle right then. So if you're look, when you're looking and talking about thawing the plan with maybe one of these alternatives, I think, you know, under that 6 and 3/4% investment assumption with Alternative 2, for example, you're going to back up to that 2.5 million dollar range, okay? It doesn't mean we would have to jump there immediately, but fairly quickly, we probably ought to get there. You know what I'm saying? So, so no matter what you do with the thaw, for this immediate year, you know, the next following year, we can, we can work our way up to these numbers, but I wouldn't recommend waiting a long time to do that. And I think you ought to make your decision, you know, based on, you know, these maybe more realistic numbers, sort of knowing where we're headed as opposed to, well, let's, let's thaw it in a certain way, and even though we might get away with, you know, 1.8 or 2 million right now, we'll deal with the other later. I, you know, I mean, if you want to take that approach, that's fine. It's, I don't have a horse in the race, obviously, but I would, I guess what I'm saying is I wouldn't, if you, if you decide to make a decision on something other than these numbers, just, just be prepared that whatever number we start at, it might be lower today, but it's going to get, it's going to get here. And frankly, the longer you could all fund it something, these numbers actually down the road get higher, okay? So.
All right. Let me ask another question of somebody. These figures and how fast we were able to do whatever this company decided to do, we benefited. would they, would they go into affect this budget year, we have to go back and amend the budget for this 2014, which began June July 1? Are we looking at...
My understanding was that with this kind of thaw, we were kinda looking maybe July 1 or 14?
Four, okay.
So it would, it would be, I mean, I, I don't know, it's your business, the budget, obviously, but to me, we're already in October, so we're already a third of the way done this year, I think it would be tough to try and build something else in the budget. I mean, Larry mentioned, you've got built into the budget, right, the Alternative One thaw for this year, that's, that's...
Oh, yes.
That was him.
And, and, Alternative One, the 1.8 million, it's in this year's budget, and that was done so that there was a great concern on behalf of council about our ability to hire public service, public safety people. So, we did that, and then Chief Coleman and Chief Doughty, they can say, okay, we do have a retirement plan for you, and this is what it is.
Right. So I, I think you have, at least for the time being, addressed, maybe addressed your, the situation of not being able to hire, you know, or, or having to tell potentially employees, we have no pension power. But, you know, that obviously then leads to the, you know, your current group of employees, some of whom, a small group of them, the ones that are fairly recent hires, they are gonna benefit from what you've already done. But, but most of the employees, you know, certainly anybody who's been around more than a few years, is not gonna benefit, at least not for a long time to come, they will not benefit from this Alternative One. So, the problem is, and I, and I was here Tuesday and met with the retirement committee, and Mayor was there, and I don't know if it was you who asked the question, somebody had asked me, we had been talking for a while, and somebody says, well, what's it gonna take to solve our problem? And I said, money. It's simple. Are you the one who asked it? Right, right. Yeah. And, and, I mean, it really is that simple. There, you know, it, it, it's money, and, and money may not bring hap, may not buy happiness, but it sure does make things easier, you know? And, and really, that is the answer. I don't know what your situation is financially, what your future budgets look like, I don't know how easy it is to, to increase this 1.8 million that Larry mentioned, to, to, to get it to, to and a half, but I would say this, even under Alternative Two, if you are kind of leaning in that direction as a, as a way to thaw, I think your expectations should be, and you should be prepared, when you do the budgets in a couple of years now, be prepared fairly quickly that you're gonna need to be putting in two and a half million dollars, maybe even more, into this plan in order to do that. We can, we can, you know, we, we can take a year or two maybe to get there, doesn't mean we have to jump there instantly, but, don't make that decision thinking, you know, 1.8, 1.9 million, we're good, we can just, you know, we need to, I, I think you need to think in terms of, of basically any kind of meaningful thought, where everyone's gonna benefit from a thaw. You need to be thinking of, you know, two and a half million dollars plus, as far as what the city will need to contribute, and then, of course, the tough part is trying to figure out where's that money gonna come from.
We had mentioned too, that if we were to choose the Alternative Two, and allow that later in the B plan, on the third page, those are the alternative employees, then you're talking about two and a half times five, ten, I'd be able to say it out and not get that that type of thing.
Well, um...
Is that what you mentioned, Jimmy? Did we get the alternative two?
Some, some will and some won't, I mean, I mean, the thing is, it's hard, you know, we, we can look at it on kind of an individual basis. The ones who are older, you know, their benefit accruals are actually worth quite a bit, you know what I mean? They're, they're the ones that are closer to retirement, and so even though they maybe have to pay five percent of their pay, they really are getting something back from, from that. But, but your, your point is well taken, in that, let me remind everybody, that 2008 plan, and what this Alternative Two does, is it's one and a half percent is the formula. The regular formula was for two.
Two, right.
Not giving the right numbers. So, so you, basically what we're talking about under that Alternative Two, is anybody who was hired prior to July of '08, which is still the majority of your workforce, they had been accruing pensions at the rate of two percent for every year of service. That new plan is gonna give them basically three-fourths of that, one and a half percent, which is better than nothing. Something's better than nothing, but it's not, obviously not putting them back where they were. And then, you know, obviously, I think what we decided was, that if everyone is contributing five percent of their pay, that's worth about, what's it, $300,000 or so? So, you know, it's a matter, so that you can see here, that the, the city's cost, basically, instead of being, you know, two and a half million plus, it's in the 2.2, 2.3 million dollar range. So, you, you could go Alternative Two, with that five percent employee contribution, and, and the city, you know, probably has to come up with maybe $300,000 a year less than it otherwise would have to come up with. But, you know, I, I wish that I could, you know, I wish I had some, some magic formula that I, I mean, you know, we, we met earlier this afternoon, there was a, a meeting, and a lot of the participants were there, and, you know, they asked a question about when do you think it would be thawed, you know, this kind of thing, and I, I mean, it's not, I know it's tough for them, because they're, right now, they're really not, they're not, I mean, a pension is really not part of their compensation package, because they're not getting anything, you know? And, that's tough, and it certainly makes it tough for the city to compete against other cities and counties and so forth for hiring and, and even retaining your current employees. So, I wish I had a, an easy answer, you know, if Richard would just step up to the plate and guarantee us maybe about 10% a year? I mean, that'd probably take care of it, so I don't know if we could do that.
Hey, you put a whole package around to y'all when it comes to...
Yeah, I know.
Chuck, Chuck, one thing I want to make very clear, is that any benefit that has been earned or accrued up until October of 2010, that is theirs.
That's right.
That is the pensioner's benefit. That will, we can't take that away from them.
That's right.
But the, the Alternative Two, Four, or Three or Four, if it's a mandatory contribution, if you got 20 years of investment in this pension plan, and then if you have to put five percent on top of that, you're so far down the road that you will never see a return on that five percent. It's, it's gonna be taking money from employees that, if they have to make that contribution. Is that a fair statement?
Um, well, I, I mean, it's gonna vary from individual to individual. Some, some people, some people might be break even, some might lose out. I mean, I think most people, you know, the, the ones, some of it gets to your pay level, obviously, because some people, you know, five percent of their pay, they're, they're making, you know, it's real dollars going into plan.
I think it was, I think it was one of the police officers that mentioned the other day, when we had, at the retirement board meeting, that it would take them at least ten, they had to have at least eight or 10 years left before they would actually see a benefit from that.
Well, yeah, and I, I don't know specifically, because it, it really is gonna vary by individual. I mean, I think most people, even if they're having to pay five percent for a one and a half percent formula of benefit, I mean, most people, I think, will get at least something out of that. I mean, I don't, I, you know, most people, I don't think will be losers, so to speak. Because keep in mind, the, the ones who will be paying more would be the higher salary people, who presume, I mean, for the most part, not everybody, but many of those are long-service people who are older and close to retirement, which means the benefit they're earning is more valuable in and of itself, in other words, they're close to starting to draw that benefit, and so it has more value, you know? Just, by way of background, the way these plans work, someone who's, say, 25 years old, the benefit that they're earning when they're 25, 26, 27, that benefit may not be paid to them for 30 or 40 years, literally, so the benefit doesn't, that, that benefit accrual doesn't have a lot of value, you know, if we were to come up with a value for it. Someone on the other end who's maybe 55 years old, and has been around for 25 or 30 years, even though they may have to pay five percent, if they're, if they're earning a benefit accrual, you know, it's gonna be paid to them sooner rather than later, and, and so it, it does have, it's, it's a lot more valuable. They are paying more, but it, it's also a lot more valuable, so, the only, I mean, you can't really make a general statement, I think, it's, it's, you'd have to look, there, there probably are gonna be some people that we can find, who, with that five percent contribution, you know, they've been around long enough that, 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 you know, they may not really get a lot back for that, that's true. But I, I think most employees would be, you know, would benefit from it. And, you know, the options that I, it's frustrating for me sometimes, because there are so many choices. I mean, I can't imagine for you guys, but, you know, there, there's just, there's so many ways you can slice or dice this, I mean, you know, you, you don't have to do the same thing for all employees, you, you know, you can mix and match, I mean, there certainly are some things you can't do. You can't do less for older employees than you do younger, and things like that, obviously, that's age discrimination, so there are certain parameters we have to work within. But within that, I mean, there's just a whole world of options and choices that you, that you have. And, all of them, really, it's, it comes down to money. I mean, every one of them comes back to money, and what do you have above and beyond the 1.8 million that you've kind of got built into your budget going forward? How much more money do you have to spend on pensions? And, and if you can find the money, you've got it, great, you know, I can tell you what you can buy with it. But, that's what it's all about, somehow coming up with the money to, to pay for it. And fortunately, I don't have to figure that part out. That's, that's the hardest part. It's, it's easy enough for me to sit, stand up here and, you know, tell you what I think certain things are gonna cost, but I'm not the one who has to come up with the money to pay for it, so. Do you have any questions about what we prepared? And by the way, what came out of Tuesday's meeting, I am, can't promise we do it tomorrow, we'll be back in the office tomorrow, I've been on the road most of this week, but I'm, I'm gonna make an attempt tomorrow to do this, just while it's fresh in my mind, but I was asked to prepare kind of an alternative projection on this, focusing on this Alternative Two, so there is at least one more projection that I'll be sending out, I'll probably just email, usually what I do is email to Harlan, and she, she disseminates it to everyone who needs, needs to see it. But, that is coming, and it'll be a little bit of a twist on what we have here, but...
Be a twist on these items under the seat?
Well, yeah, what, it's, let me tell you what, what I was gonna change, I'm in my notes. I'm only 51, but I still, I, I've had six meetings in three days, still, with six different plans, so it's hard for me to remember from, from Tuesday what we... Okay, so, what I was gonna do there was, I'll lower the salary increase projection. You know, when I go to project pension numbers, one of the things I have to do is project how much pay will go up for each employee over the, from now until they get to the point of retirement. Our kind of standard assumption that we've used for, for Tifton has been three and a half percent per year. Now, that, and that probably leans a little conservative, in that it's probably a little bit on the high side. Now, I'd, I'd always rather, I'd always rather come in and, and tell you, this is what I think things could cost, and if it ends up being a little cheaper, I haven't had a client yet in my nearly 30-year career complain when something ends up being a little cheaper than what we thought it was gonna be. So I'm, I'm kind of always of the mindset of, let's kind of overshoot a little bit and prepare for, you know, be a little conservative. But, what we did decide is that really, in my notes, I, I know somebody has said two percent, I think that's probably a little bit low. I was gonna go back and run it at three, from three and a half down to three. That doesn't sound like much, but, you know, half percent less pay increase per year, it does make a difference in the numbers.
And just explain, that's not necessarily a three percent pay raise?
That's right, it's not just, that, that's right, that's, thank you. It, that, that assumption is not intended to just be kind of the inflationary across the board raises that all the employees get, it also needs to capture promotional increases over the course of someone's career. That's why, you know, when we assume three and a half percent, we're not saying we think that there will be three and a half percent inflationary raises each and every year, that's not what we're saying. We're saying that between, by the time you add together both the inflationary type raises that are given, plus the promotional increases that the individuals would get, presumably over the course of their careers, they go up to different pay grades and so forth, that the two together would be about three and a half percent on average. So what I was gonna do is, is maybe lower that to three percent, I think that's, that may be a little more realistic than certainly than three and a half. I, I think if we were to go down like two or two and a half, I'm not sure that we, I think we might be capturing the inflationary part, I'm not sure we'd be capturing the, the promotional increases that people get. So, I was gonna use three percent, and the other thing that I was gonna do, I didn't mention this Tuesday, but I do have the information that I need to, to go ahead and do the 2013 numbers, all these projections are based on the 2012 valuation, so I was gonna try to go ahead and give an updated projection based on this good year, for example, to reflect this good year we just had, which will help, that'll help a little bit with the numbers. It was really gonna be, I guess you'd call it a refinement of this Alternative Two column, and then get that, you know, try to get it back down to part of, like I said, I'll do my best to get it out tomorrow, without making, I never know what I walk into when I go back to the office, having to go on for three days, but, you know, if I can get that out and, get something back to you all, and that was maybe, maybe, so it'll literally just be an update of these numbers, and the numbers, you know, will look a little bit better than what you sit here. But I still think, if you've got in your, in your mind to, if, if you're thinking about, for example, Alternative Two, I, I still think you need to be thinking in terms of, you know, two and a quarter to two and a half million dollars, as far as coming up with something.
Chuck, you addressed the fiscal year 13, 14, we're at 2.6 million, that was part of that, and then, in the 14, 15 year, it dropped down to 2.2, and then, then starts to climb back up. Why is the $400,000 drop there?
I don't know that I'm gonna be able to answer that right now, except to say that that, the FY14, the, the July 1, 2012 valuation is used to determine what the city has to contribute for 2014 fiscal year, in other words, there's a, there's a one-year lag, and I believe, I don't know that I said on here, but I believe when I did this, that I did assume a, an investment gain, you know, in the current year, in other words, when I was doing the projection. So in other words, the 13, 14 contribution is really based on that July 1, 12 valuation, and then when I went beyond that, I think I, I'm pretty sure I was assuming, and I don't have that with me, but I'm pretty sure I was assuming an investment gain, so I was kind of anticipating, I had not seen it, but most of my clients had, you know, a double insurance, I had a certain amount of investment gain that I had built in. I think that's why you see that, but that's it, yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Good night, we love to do this with all the cities.
I would love it, I agree. Chuck, thanks, Greg.
Thank you, thank you, it's good to see all of you again. Uh, once we send those other projections out, you know, always, you need to call me directly, or certain, can always get questions to Harlan, she and I talk fairly, fairly frequently, so I'm always glad to try to answer questions and help you, help you with the decision, it's not easy, good job, Mr....
Thank you, Chuck, appreciate it. Our, our next, we're gonna have Van Houten, and I asked him to talk to us about the horrible housing we did in Keith, we did the other day, and, you know, it was pretty good stuff, so I called him, he died for the council, to hear that. Today, if you come on in, you're certainly used to talk right here.
Thank you. I wrote this to say good afternoon, however, it's all evening now, because the mayor promised me I'd do first up, but I can't fight money. Last week, at your Georgia Initiative for Community Housing, GICH is the acronym, a milestone occurred, your mayor went to the meeting. That's positive.
I'm glad you did that.
Jamie asked me to share with you all some of the background, accomplishments, current happenings, and ongoing projects in the area of providing affordable housing in Tifton. And I wanna qualify that by saying we are including sheltering in the definition of housing. Two months ago, we did not consider sheltering.
Definitely that one, yeah.
I'll get to it in a little bit. I get that, sorry, I'll get to it in a little bit. The economic driver between, or, relatively, affordable housing in Tifton is the fact that half of your workforce in the county do not live in Tifton County. They drive into, into, or, shift time, they drive to work and they drive home. They're spending a lot of money on petrol. If they live here, they'd have more spendable dollars in Tifton, Tifton County, okay? So you have a need for more affordable housing. We also know that you can buy a house, pay a mortgage, for less money than you pay for rent in Tifton, Georgia. That's a fact. You've got real estate books here, you can nod ahead, okay? So there is a need to provide affordable housing in Tifton. Now, the Georgia Initiative for Community Housing... Now, the Georgia Initiative for Community Housing, who's got a water bottle that they haven't opened? I meant to bring something, 'cause I knew when I get up there and start running my mouth, I did dry. 'Cause it happens at church, I know it happens.
It's not one of those where, don't bother looking, watch it, don't make any noise.
I'm not gonna look at my watch, I'm looking at my water bottle. No, I got things to say. GIC is a Department of Community Affairs sponsored program. It started in 19, I mean, 2005. In 2006, Larry Reiner received a letter from Karen Tensney of DCA that said Tifton and Tifton County had been selected to be a participant in the GIC program. What in the world's a GIC program? Five communities each year are enrolled into that program. It's a three-year program, so there are 15 communities each year involved in the GIC program. The groups from these communities get together twice a year for a semi-annual retreat. But it's not a retreat, you don't go hide, you work your tail off, and you learn a lot. Tifton was part of the GIC program in '07, '08, and '09. We formed a committee in Tifton, hopefully with all the players that were needed to provide more affordable housing in the community. The original committee consisted of Ray Henderson from the County Community Development Arena, Larry Reiner, who was somewhere in the area of Public Works Director and/or Assistant City Manager, Ricky Matthews from the First Community Bank, the money folks, the lenders, okay? Dale Sumner, who was in real estate, he sold houses. Jonathan Jones, a builder of homes. Shonda Clark, Tifton Housing Authority. Donnie Hester, Tifton County Commissioner. Melissa Chevers, representative from the community, had no specific job at that point in time, just a solid contributor. Diane Kilgore from AVAC, who was the head of the outreach program. Ray Ross, the Habitat spokesperson, David Heltzel, City Councilman, and Myra Jackson, who represented the Hispanic community because she's bilingual, okay? And we met every month. We established our work plans, we made sure that we had money available. And so Tifton has had a CHIP grant, jumping around, I'm never gonna do that. Had a CHIP grant in '07, no, '08, '09, and 2011. $300,000 each time. That money was designated to provide down payment assistance and help with closing costs. Now, through time, some of the names have changed. We have added, Ricky moved away. We have Jennifer Yawn from First Community Bank. In the meantime, we added United Way Director, Greg Milet. We added a representative from the City Attorney and Defense Bureau Association, who was Bruce Sack. He has moved, his replacement is Paula Lewis, and she is on the GIC committee. We founded a shortfall, and we brought in Steve Hyman, representing the law enforcement community, but primarily because of the Neighborhood Watch Program, which helps maintain what you got and prevent, react to and prevent problems in the long haul. And we found we had a resident who was retired from HUD her whole lifetime, a Tifton native, that's very active in the community, Elaine Cook. And so she knows what goes on in Washington, we don't, but she does, and, you know, is very, very helpful with that. In 20, in 2008, we put 20 first-time homeowners in houses. In 2009, we put 20 families, first-time homeowners, in homes in Tifton. The 2011 CHIP program is still working, it's not counted a year, it's until the money runs out, okay? The 2011 program is still working. 16 families so far are in homes, so that's a total of 46, I mean, yeah, no, 56, okay? We got five more opportunities, and we're working notes, I confirmed that today. In 20, okay, so our year there, our three years at the table was seven, eight, and nine. In 2010, we didn't do a whole lot, because we had graduated, okay? And I want to share with you some things from the world on high. I have a copy of the freshman agenda for the 17th September 2013 retreat, okay? I also have a copy of the, that was for the freshman class, I also have a copy of the sophomore agenda for 2013. I also have congratulations, 2013 graduates for demonstrating commitment and quality of affordable housing in communities of Auburn, Eatonton, Nashville, and Washington. And we know somebody or some-somodies at all those locations. Now, after we graduated and have had the distinction, get that trophy and things like that, for the first year or so, there was nothing formally, formal going on for Tifton. Several years ago, we made enough noise that we have an alumni group. Fortunately, I have enough kids throughout the state that I could find bedrooms most of the time. That didn't cost us anything, and I paid my way, okay? And I went to most of those semi-annual retreats. So I kept myself in the loop, which kept Tifton in the loop. So we knew what was going on, I'd go to the retreats, I'd bring back the agendas, I'd get to listen to the speakers, okay? Now, in 2011, Tifton hosted, and this is the second time, we hosted a semi-annual retreat. And part of that retreat is a tour, a bus tour. And one of the things we pointed out, as we rode around Tifton bragging of things we had done, was an empty lot at 403 North Park Avenue, which had, the falling-down home had been condemned by your Code Enforcement Office. It had been razed and was empty. The land had been forfeited to the city. It was, the deed was conveyed to DDA to manage that property. As we, so we rode around, we pointed out that empty lot in historic district, man, okay? Very skinny lot. Somewhere early in 2011, I got a call from somebody at Multitech. He says, "We're looking for an atypical lot in the historic district to build a zero-energy house." Duh. So I called Mr. Wright, and I says, "We got a skinny lot." DDA made it available to the builder, which was Multitech, with the agreement that when that house was finished and sold, the money, the lot was paid for, okay? So you now have a house sitting there privately owned on the tax rolls that meets the requirement, designed architecturally-wise, for historic districts. So you got something you can sell to other folks in the state, okay? But it's there, and it's awesome. So this year at the retreat, when we, and the old folks get a chance to go to a show and tell, I was able to show them pictures of 403 North Park Avenue, okay? Now, back to the business. Oh, the house was sold about a month ago, and DDA received a check. And I attend DDA meetings, because I'm still concerned about what goes on. And they deposited a $10,000 check there again. Now, in addition to the single-family units I talked about, you have had many tax incentive projects constructed. Some are income and/or age limited. But you've got the first project on Kent Road, you've got the latest one out on King Road. We got, those are multifamily. You've got Tifton Estates with the 33 single-family units. And they were all leased, by the way, and filled within 90 days of construction, Jay. Now, about two months ago, Department of Veterans Affairs at the state level came down and says, "There is a program to end veterans homelessness." Well, Johnny and I didn't realize that we had brothers and sisters on the street, but we do, okay? So when Tifton's folks that care about our people got together, we knew from the Tifton County Commission on Children and Youth that the key to making things happen in Tifton is a coalition, not one single agency to get this, okay? So we established a homeless coalition, not limiting just to veterans. The current players, United Way, Church Command Families, Tifton County Commission on Children and Youth, Tifton Housing Authority, Salvation Army, Brother Charlie's, Ruth's Cottage, Behavioral Health, County Health, Congressman Scott's office, HUD VAS, which is a VA outfit from government, and yours truly. And at this point, I'm representing nonprofit organizations in Tifton. Somebody asked me the other day, "What am I doing now that I'm sitting on the city council?" I spend all my time with nonprofit organizations. So somebody said, "Give me a list," and I'm gonna share that here. Save Our Pets, raising money to help set the cost of spending neutering for dogs and cats adopted from our shelter. I'm chairperson. Walls, Willacoochee, Whiffacoochee, Alapahai, Little River System, Watershed Coalition. We've got a Flint River Keeper on the west, and a Satella River Keeper on the east. The four rivers in between that is where we live, nobody has taken care of, ever. We have a nonprofit, I'm the chair. Keep Tifton Beautiful, I'm past chair. Drug Prevention Tax Course, Tifton County Commission on Children and Youth, and I'm on the Board of Justies. Tifton Theater Board, I'm on the Eastern Seal Board for the region. I'm in a Coed Garden Club, I'm on four different committees at church. I sit on the South Georgia Regional Police Academy Board at AVAC. I attend the Georgia Water Coalition meetings. And right now, it's about 212 different water-concerned agencies throughout the state that get together twice, three times a year and take action through lobbying and court cases to turn things around when folks are going askew. And I can talk probably about some of those actions. I'm on the GIC committee, GIC has greenways association. Attend the DDA meetings just because I want to, and I'm on the homeless coalition. Now, what's important is all these things fit together hand and glove.
We talked about our climate.
Well, that's just a little bitty thing.
That's not a little bitty thing.
You can plug that, I got that in here, you can plug that. I'm gonna talk a little bit about it. Now...
Dave, I'm gonna have to, who's y'all gonna have to get free, I don't know if it takes this long, we've got a lot more.
I understand that, if you ask me to come and brief you all, that's what I'm trying to do.
I'll brief as quick as I can.
On the 13th of November, will be a survey. And that's the date that you will tell the surveyors if you're homeless. Surveys will be available 15th through the 19th, to the 29th of November. I would like and request that you let us put them where you pay your bills to UTA bills, realizing that if you got UTA bill, you're not homeless. But you probably, a lot of folks know folks who are. And so we want places for them to pick up the survey form to be filled out, okay? So we gotta do a survey. We don't have a head count on who and how many are homeless. Now, the other major thing we discovered, and this is sad. If you're a male and you're homeless, you can go to Brother Charlie's and they'll find you a bed and feed you. If you've been battered or abused, you can go to Ruth's Cottage, same thing. If you are a lady, not been beaten upon, maybe with the kids or without kids, there is no shelter in Tifton County. Their closest shelters is Albany and Valdosta. How do they get there? My concern is, why take them there when the issues that they need to resolve aren't hit? So we're looking at, as the homeless coalition's looking at, finding a place to develop a lady shelter in Tifton, Georgia. Keep that in mind, we need your help. Thanks.
Dave, thank you very much.
And you are a bit the maniest. For your service as a citizen of Tifton County.
Like I told somebody years ago, if you see me out doing it, it's 'cause I want to, I enjoy it. Only thing I have to do that I don't really care for is pay taxes. But if I didn't make the money, I wouldn't pay taxes. So that's fine to me.
Dave, we appreciate you. Of course, Dave, I'm a long time ago, I didn't have the last say. Let me tell you why I hadn't been to those things. We hadn't been getting invitations. Larry has corrected that now. I thought you were down to one meeting for a month, a year. And so you corrected, and that's why I was there, and I love to see Julie there. I love to see all of us on council coming and visiting. And Dave, you're a head full of knowledge about it, he's been right in the middle of a cold bin, and he's right. It all goes hand in hand, every bit of it. So Dave, thank you very much.
And Julie, I can get to talk about the 16th of November, you have to cover that, haven't you?
We'll do that.
And, okay, we're gonna move now to item four. When I get a call from Mr. William, I call New Deal. I always pay attention, and we love our veterans. We have a veteran that sits on our own city council here, Josh, but Dave, a little better. And when y'all call, we listen, and I expect to click my people. He called, and he said, "You know, over here at VFW, we used to do bingo." And we, we've not done it in quite some time. And there's no alcohol that's addressed with the bingo over there. We wanna return to the bingo, and Sunday seems the best of the day to do this. And I agree, so I called Mr. Ronan. I said, "Ronan, let's see if we can make this happen and put it to the council, whatever it needs to do." Ronan called me back, and he said, "You are complete, man. There's an old, old ordinance that said you can't play bingo on Sundays." So I said, "You know what, let's bring this before the council, this thing can be changed, it's antiquated, it's old. It's the craziest thing I've ever heard. This is the VFW, these are our veterans, and it's not gonna be any alcohol addressed with it. And Larry, do you wanna further mention on that, or Ronan, I don't know if you've done a study on it?"
I did call the state, because I wanted to make sure we weren't just reiterating state law. It is allowed, it's actually managed by the GBI. So there are three licenses that you can get for bingo. One is a nursing home license, one is a recreational bingo license, and I believe the one that they're talking about is a GBI bingo license. Of course, the nursing home one is self-explanatory. The recreational one... The recreational one, um, allows, it only allows cash prizes up to fifteen dollars. So if they're planning on doing anything more than fifteen dollars, they have to have a license specifically given by the Children's Association.
Okay, Bill, well, that's.
We got a license.
We're trying to change the date from Wednesday, we're losing money to Sunday.
Because we got a bunch of senior citizens that can't get out at night anymore, they want to come play bingo.
Yeah.
So then we trying to go along with them so they can come play bingo on Sunday afternoon. It'll be at the church, and it'll be over with the fourth church start Sunday night.
Okay.
And they did confirm that it is legal to have bingo on Sundays.
Right, okay, and there's no alcohol in my.
No, sir.
We don't even have.
We don't even have smoking there.
I thought you were asking if you wanted to tell me I had to bring the alcohol to the party, so I don't know, man.
So what do we do now, Mr. Attorney? Do we, we can't satisfy changing the ordinance here, but we can talk about it and do it at the first meeting in in November, is that correct, Mr.? Okay.
And I do have the law in the back, that's very sure.
Right. And, uh, anybody have any questions? Bill, I need to hear from one of you, what you've done.
We're we're never ready to have a November meeting.
Yes, November meeting, we vote on that. That was your first month in November.
Appreciate y'all taking the taking the time to look into it for us. We legal, we 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 do all our reports, we got the best, uh, VFW post in in district eight. They never, they never call our name for not doing something, so we tried to, we thank y'all. Try to do what we do right.
We thank y'all for y'all's out for our country, thank you very much, God bless you.
And you know, the exchange, uh, exchange does have a pancake, uh, breakfast over there on the night at our post.
And then that'll be, then we'll have a parade.
Yeah.
It's gonna be a big day.
Yeah.
That'd be fun.
And, uh, Mr. Stafford in, uh. It's cage, but, yeah, Stafford here. Thank you.
Thank y'all, appreciate you coming, God bless. Okay, we're gonna move on now to resolutions providing for amendment to purchasing policy.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
You will recall for.
I've been pushing this a long time.
For for a long time, I know for eighteen months, I can think of. That you wanted to revisit the spending limits of the city manager and the department heads. Uh, Ms. Love and her staff and I have sliced, diced. Put it back together, tore apart, put it back together again, try to come up with something that we thought was reasonable. And that would allow us to operate legally, and she wouldn't be having a heart attack up there in finance.
If I leave the policy again, Larry, if I leave the policy.
If you recall, we had a thirty-three thousand dollar repair on a capital that we had to do. Which my spending, that's below my spending, spending limit, I called you and said, we gotta do it, and we did it. So I'm turning this over to Ms. Love and let her tell you the results of our slice and dice and put together and put together again.
What we have changed is the first, uh, resolution, I'm just gonna go down to the one, three, four, and just briefly talk about that. But we did check on the state website, and local governments do have full exemption to set their own thresholds, uh, for the purchasing policy. But we did not change one, they're still at twenty-five hundred before the department heads are there designing their purchase without the benefit of the process. Number two, we changed, we increased that limit from, uh, nine hundred and ninety-nine, nine thousand, nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars to twenty-five thousand, twenty-five hundred to twenty-five thousand. That gives the department head or director the right to purchase, uh, the authority to purchase with three written quotes. And all those written quotes has to stay on file for five years at the department level. And it puts that responsibility back at the department head level. That does require approval by the finance director and the city manager. So that will come through, uh, that process or proof of approval is actually processed. The, uh, number, number three, the purchases, we have increased that from ten thousand to twenty-five thousand, and to twenty-five thousand to a hundred thousand. And that's any purchase other than gas and fuel inventory, which they used to run over, and we used to have to purchase those real quickly or, uh, expedite that payment and everything. We have also included sole source, which is when you can only receive the merchandise or the service from a sole source or a brand name. You know, we've included that. Or that it requires maintenance as determined by the city manager, like the, uh, instance that, uh, Mr. Ryan mentioned a minute ago. In in order to continue the departmental operations, we want to be able to go forward with operation. And anything within that range requires a formal bid process and a proof bid conference. But then it also goes through the approval process as well. Finance director, city manager, uh, approves that.
Now, let me ask you a question, are you saying that the sole source, that someone could spend a hundred thousand dollars on a sole source, or they cannot?
Well, it could go up to a hundred thousand, anywhere between twenty-five thousand and a hundred thousand.
Sole source.
Could be a sole source, yes.
So that would have to still be approved by the city manager and the finance director?
That is correct.
A sole source. What might we else recommend in completing a sole source? Does that happen often?
Uh, for example, if you have one of those influence functions, remember when Scott Murphy from yesterday came in, that's a ninety thousand dollar purchase.
And it's a sole source.
It's a sole source.
All right.
Unless we go in there and do some modifications and make something else work.
Okay, but that's what I wanted to add.
And then, of course, the purchases over a hundred thousand, we can increase that to twenty-five thousand to a hundred thousand. Um, requires a formal bid process. And it also requires we give an approval to the city manager, and also will come to the city council for approval. But anything over a hundred thousand will come back and be checked.
Mr. Sean, pray you're alive.
What we all recommend, they should, this.
I'm dying, I'm just hanging.
Yes, it does, it it puts the, uh, purchasing limits, you know, and delegates the authority back to the department head, finance director, or the city manager. Uh, and the council over a hundred thousand dollars.
Now, one more question. What do you do? Can just one of those three people have taken this or all three on the back?
It goes through the finance director and the city manager, and it reaches that level.
Okay.
The department director, uh, has the authority up to twenty-five hundred. And then after that, it has to go back through the finance.
It requires three approvals, Mr. City, the department head, finance director, and the city manager.
But the department head only has approval up to twenty-five hundred.
Right.
Without the additional directions.
And we're all required to remain, to operate within our given budgets, we cannot exceed those budgets.
Right.
Like y'all, you're, I want you to do that.
Any more questions? Thank you, that was very clear. All right, uh, resolution providing for enterprise zone application for Allen, DIAVAX. Probably located at two twenty-five each second. Let's see, part back then, Ronan.
Allen DIAVAX, we have applied for an enterprise zone, uh, designation at, for two twenty-five East Second Street. That is going to include rentals, those residential and, uh, business offices, I believe. Um, we have been working on the abatements. Uh, right now, um, BURPRO has signed off on approximately eight hundred and fifty dollars in building fees, that is an approximation. We won't really know until they get down to the work of it. Um, I still, uh, have to hear from Ricky Hobbie, um, on any landfill tipping fees, but I will have those before it actually comes to you for action on November the fourth. And I've estimated the tax abatements over a ten-year period to be, um, a little over, actually thirteen thousand, seven hundred dollars. And we expect the assessment to be around four hundred and fifty thousand upon completion. The staff is recommending approval.
Any questions?
Is he not having enough, Johnny, let me ask a question.
Oh, yes.
Is he not having enough employees to qualify for the enterprise zone to?
I have not.
Please do an enterprise opportunities, I'm sorry, yes.
I have not, I have not.
He also qualifies for both, if he's, generally if you qualify for one, you're real close to qualifying for the other, so.
Yeah, that's a good.
So.
So it's the opportunities.
Obviously, yeah.
Right.
And if his rehab, if he would be willing to go through the status quo preservation, he might meet the qualifications for getting all those taxes, and as we talked about with Ms. Burns the other day. So just a thought.
I didn't know that Julie suggested these positive vows.
You should, it's good stuff. It's good stuff, I mean, we created it, we might as well use it.
Exactly right. And you'll share that with them.
I will.
Okay. All right, and, uh. One more question for Ronan, as soon as the order provided for signing.
Uh, as y'all are aware, we are in the process of trying to revamp and revise our land development code and HBC manual. And there are some signs that, uh, preexisted the adoption of the LDC, that are probably not in compliance. And, uh, it was felt by staff that. Rather than trying to enforce, uh, the old ordinance against those signs, it'd be best to wait and see what revisions were made to the current HBC manual and LDC. But if those changes then would permit and allow those signs, then there'd be no need to take any enforcement measures. So basically what this does is it puts an otorium on the enforcement of any, against any signs in existence prior to the adoption of the LDC. This does not affect any new signs, you know, going forward. And, uh, and basically it'll be ineffective until the HBC manual has been revised, the LDC's been revised, or six months, whichever is earliest. And I think six months will certainly have something in place that will revise that manual and the LDC, so that's the purpose of it.
Now, I thought that the things that were grandfathered in, we we couldn't touch, I thought.
Well, there, that's that's a good issue. As far as the actual structure itself, uh, I believe that's true.
Okay.
There is a question as to whether or not if you change the the lighting on the sign, is that something that would be grandfathered?
Okay.
Uh, so generally structured, no.
Yeah.
But I mean, I see many ordinances.
Okay, I just knew I heard that line.
Right.
That could be on the building.
Numerous orders that I have seen, including the state law and the billboards, uh, signings that. The way you, uh, operate that sign may not necessarily be grandfathered. The structure itself.
So this buys some more time for that until we can, we do go.
That's right, basically, it's it's, it tells the co-enforcement not to worry about those signs by the LDC until we see what are changed.
One of it.
Did everyone receive the question there from Mr. Wilma? We need to get those back as quickly as possible so we can keep getting this process.
Yeah, if you can walk in my shoes last today.
Well, I'm doing that.
How does this impact signs that have gone after the adoption of LDC that are in violation of what's in place at the moment? Are we not enforcing that, or are we?
As I understand it. Some signs have been approved that may not.
And I'm talking to true signs, because I am seeing more and more and more of these stick signs. On rights of way, in historic district, out of historic district, doesn't matter, they are everywhere.
Julie, when you say sticks, are you talking about?
Oh, little political style signs, and I'm not talking about the politicians' signs or the the folks that'll run for political office right now, I'm just talking about advertisements. Yeah, that's, I'm seeing a lot of those on rights of way and.
They're on Virginia Avenue.
Oh, I know.
And basically, the ordinance, the LDC and the sign ordinance, those adopted July. Those provisions apply and should be enforced at this point. But again, the difficulty is is that I do believe there's probably some sites that are permitted, particularly LED signs or electronic graphic design signs, that, uh.
Yeah, I'm not talking about those, I'm talking about just temporary signs right now, um, that's something that could be put out tonight, today and and picked up tonight and that kind of thing.
Well.
Nothing, nothing that's permanently affixed.
But those.
Bert, you want to try me?
I just, I was just gonna say, can we pull twenty a week? I have staff at one.
I know.
Okay?
I know.
Can you get them all?
So you are watching for them, but. Okay, okay.
You don't blame it, go downstairs and look right here, back there, you have to stack them.
You gotta stack them, okay.
The signs have been pulled with tanks on them, waiting on them, because they think they're locked. But Bert, you pull them, they pull them back out, and we just keep pulling, and that's all we, all we have is to pull them up.
Do we contact those people and say, you're violation?
Because every landowner is where they're stuck, and that doesn't necessarily mean that they're signed.
Right.
That's what I'm saying.
But do we contact the business, for example, if I've got Julie's Pizza Company and I put it out there, would you call Julie's Pizza Company and say, your sign was on right of way and we got it?
What do you do with the real estate, do you call their company?
I'm sorry, do you know?
The real estate, do you call their company and tell them that it's been taken up?
I have before, I I, in the real estate, they don't have a problem with it. We really don't have a problem with real estate.
We we really try to monitor that, but.
I've seen, but I've seen some.
And we do pull, and we tell them, and we send letters out.
And they should be, a lot of times.
You just, you know, you just keep informing the public and doing what you're empowered to do, and that's really all that we can do is what's said, we gotta do.
Absolutely, okay.
We're very aware of signs, uh, our number one, uh, important thing of of having to do is the sign related to this point.
Okay.
But that that emphasizes the the need to try to move on. I mean, I know that we want to be very careful about how we do the sign ordinance, but, you know, BUR is in the midst of a lot of development. And people making applications for signs, so we really need to figure out how we want to manage those going forward. Probably sooner rather than later, so he knows what he he can permit and not permit.
If you look on the city system webpage, we just had, uh, BUR just sent some ads, if you will, said, these are common code violations. And so those are going on the webpage. Think it on there, Dave?
That's a good idea.
I assume the big one.
Okay.
That's a good idea.
Okay, but we'll be sure, on the webpage, we'll share.
Um, can just put that on our Facebook, is she in here? Can we put that on our Facebook page? Facebook examples, right, Ronan?
We get it.
Okay.
Well, I can react into your comments, which I've read just on my iPhone, because that's a small print. You brought up some interesting ideas that were new. And I want us all to carefully consider all of those new ideas you brought out, meaning. The hate crimes that we heard about the other night, the relating this somewhat to the property size.
Right.
So the reality depends closer to what you suggested.
Yes, and one thing I want to point out, you did get that email from me. But anything that I put in there about the disturbing, and that was just something.
Something, right.
As an example, uh, there are very few cities out there that have been regulating electronic graphic design signs because it's a new technology. Uh, Maydoun was one of them, and Savannah was one of them, and I did see those, so, uh, but, yeah, if you, it's not an easy task. Making the decisions and drawing the lines, and you have to draw the lines.
And and you mentioned a map I do, too, that was another. I personally went out and there is one sign, which is in my district, it's where it makes out of the city limits, it's not, but it's near where I live. And it is ten feet wide, and I couldn't get to the top to measure it, but it looks like it's about four feet, so that's forty feet right there.
Yeah, yeah.
You talking about only forty, or something?
Yes.
I did try to think, but most of the issues that came to my mind after doing all this stuff.
And.
Again, there's something that that you all, pops in your mind, and says, we have, this is another thing we need to decide, and we'll share that with everyone in your hands, hopefully, if there's some of those. But there's not much I can do until I get your feedback about what we want, what we want to put on page at this point.
But, you know, that that particular, that mirror sign, which is might be the most expensive, or certainly one of the most expensive ones, it's not on, not a billboard. Um, was permitted, and I spent a lot of money on that sign.
Is that one of those in Carolina?
Yeah, it's it's, I mean, it does stop. It's like a TV, I mean, it does stuff and changes pictures. It's not like a CBS, it just says Coke on sale, toilet paper on sale, it's...
It's ruined by that sign.
And just about can.
You really can.
Yeah.
So, you know, that's a good sign, I mean, I, I don't have any LDC for that sign. And they want to know, you know, I mean, you know, if you were the business owner who had been permitted to put that sign up, it costs big bucks.
Wow.
You would be very concerned about it too.
And we could get into issues about taking in those circumstances. I mean, you'd always take something, maybe just an act of conversation.
That was permitted as it, and it is and was a legal sign, and it was permitted.
Right, right, I know that.
So you asked that question about those types of signs in your questionnaire?
Yes.
I'm gonna put that aside with the American law. I agree with Mary.
One of the things that they did have to make, and we'll see it in my question, is they limited the area of an electronic graphic design sign up to fifty square feet. And made for twenty-five percent of the overall sign area, which has been more restricted. So they did, you know, in making, they did limit it to fifty square feet.
What was it, what did they have?
Well, I shouldn't measure the top part, I didn't follow up with the sign, but I estimated it to be...
About forty square feet, man.
Okay, so...
So it would be within, if we were to follow Megan's guidelines, it would be within that.
Megan's point, fifty, okay. All right. Anything else on that? Before we go to the next thing, I'm gonna recognize two people here. Recognize Buck Wiggins, one of my previous candidates. Buck, it's always a pleasure to have you visit, and I just wanted to ask if anything you want to acknowledge is going to hit us with or...
By the way, we said years ago, you members of the council, we might have taken meetings, we need you to carry that effect and thing over.
Yes.
We have to get that, so I'm gonna remind the commission next time, if we can get out and have dinner together.
Sounds great. And I want to recognize Ella A. Cindy Clark here for years, you've grown up, you probably see her name on about everything you do.
I do, there's some in the back.
She was just, she was a dog, she was so smart and did all this stuff, still is smart here. But, and you know what, she's about the only person to take me and float her in the spike if I didn't get it right. Because I was back in the nineties, I was a little bit younger, she said, come here. Tell me, do you talk to you?
Oh, I've got a visual.
And, great work. Thank you for all the great work, it was good to see you.
Here's my hand, please.
I see him every now and then, scurrying out of a lead joint, I like to be talking to him, I see him, I look at him, but...
Man, I'm making mistakes.
We certainly do.
All of you here, since I've worked with the city, we're some of the best in my, my life. And I appreciate everything the city and the people in the city have given me and given me the opportunity to make a decision. I'm here, I know you know, because of the call as a retiree. And Larry gave me some indication about the thing done at meeting this afternoon, but I just wanted to show up to the night to make y'all know that, yeah, we feel like those of us who earned a couple of sugar seeds. And it was promised to us that I had a commitment to pay to us at retirement, we retired, we have a normal retirement plan. And, I mean, you know, I just wanted y'all to know that we're concerned about it. And as I pointed out at that meeting, you know, I, as well as the others, we're looking for that percent, around three percent figure. Yes, it is, to those of us on fifteen, Tom, or anywhere else. And you think it's going to be a new check in January, it doesn't show up. February then doesn't show up, does a letter show up? No. Nothing that adheres to us, slightly, that it's not going to be able to play places, there's still some missing this case. And I plan it as a player, we don't have it. But I think we need to be kept advised on what's going on, because we retired, we didn't die.
Hey, wait.
I've come by close many times, but I just, and I don't, I don't speak in court, because it's her law, but it isn't. It's just an oversight, I'm sure. But I just want y'all to know my feelings and the other people's feelings.
Thank you all. Now, I know it doesn't make you feel any better, but I'm a state retiree, and I retired out of council. They got, before I retired, thirty, fifty years down, they'd always give a three percent cover. It had never been one, except for the time they did a four or five. The minute I got retired, they couldn't give a thing, so I filled things. And maybe there's a cognitive square way to do something, but thank you, Miss Alvin, you said it's really good. Larry, did you want to address anything?
We got it.
We got it. And now, Ms. Rollmott, Red Luke providing the rules and procedures at council meetings.
Yes, sir, at the last workshop, I told you all that I had come across a resolution from ninety-five that provided a process for procedures at meetings. And what I did was, it's included in your packet, but all I've done is developed a resolution to reaffirm and confirm that original resolution that was adopted. And I have added, actually, a number three that speaks to the approval of minutes and the changing of minutes. In your packet, you've got two resolutions, one that provides citizen input at regular council meetings only. And then one that provides for input at regular meetings and workshops. And that word workshop, in my mind, should say any and all council meetings, not just, I mean, that's an option. I would be hesitant to say all. There are times, like the emergency call meeting the other day, you know, I mean, that's not a meeting where we want to probably have citizen input. So we might need to develop some type of wording to perhaps do at council's discretion, you know, for certain meetings. So I just wanted to...
Could that be the wording at council's discretion, or is that too vague?
It's not too vague, but it's, it's just, it's gonna be...
Just keeps it going, I'm gonna do whatever.
Keeps it going up into whatever you want to do.
Yeah, so I'll work on that a little bit right there. I mean, that just hit me tonight when we were here, I was looking at it, Emma. But the whole point of this is that, you know, yes, we do want to hear from our citizens, we do. And this will provide an opportunity to do that, and it gives consistency is the key. We've got to be consistent in everything that we do once we adopt it. We can't do something at one meeting and change it at another.
I don't know if this falls under this, that how do we handle situations where someone gets, you know, they're too loud or they're voice stressed or, you know, what's the...
Well, one of the things that I mentioned in here is that, and these are just thoughts from years of doing it, that the standards, we should have specific standards within this room. And that's the use of a podium, always, when someone wants to speak, they need to come up there and speak. I know it's been more relaxed in this atmosphere just because of the way the room is, making sure that they provide their name and address, addressing council directly online.
Y'all heard me telling that?
Yes, yes. You know, we have had concerns of late where it's been in the audience addressing one another, and that's when it really begins to get out of hand, in my mind. So, you know, we really need to try to avoid that as much as we can. I think by doing all these things, we will avoid turmoil within our meetings, and there's going to be, on a much more oppressive level.
All of council.
Yes, sir.
If we ever had anybody coming in and start scathing any, five of us were standing, I promise I'd get involved. And that's why I always ask to please have a policeman, it's not gonna be jumping down there, just scurrying my ass, I'm gonna ask the policeman, please escort this person out, I promise I'll do that. If I don't feel it, I expect y'all to kick me out of the table and say, okay.
Well, sometimes it's not necessarily scathing or something, they're just loud and you can't, you know, just, you know, comment amongst themselves and things like that, just to be able to say, hey.
Okay, calm it down.
But, well, and you have the authority to do that, you know, it's the presiding, the person.
Sometimes you have to call me, I get to try to prove my point, and I'll get louder and louder. And they say, you know, it sound like I'm mad at somebody, or something like that, just be trying to sell my case.
I think it's good, I think it's always good to sort of review the, you know, review the protocol.
And it talks about, you know, the timeframe, the minutes, and, you know, your five minutes.
That's established, five and three, for anybody after.
These, all of these things are what's been done, with the exception of the minutes, and that included the misses.
Okay.
Do you have any thoughts between now and the fourth, just like me?
Yeah, kind of like you, I wish we could be more specific, but then I guess there's gonna be those time, I don't know, doors that...
Well, one thing, if you want to put in there a council's discretion, you know, I think that that's gonna lead to, sometimes you will, sometimes you won't.
That's true.
I know that you all want them to be able to speak at workshops, you know. And staff is kind of, damn if you do and damn if you don't, you know, I mean, there's times when we really need to hear from people, and then there's other times when we really don't need to hear from people.
This does provide though, I mean, I haven't really read through it word for word yet, but it does provide for, if we have something that was so significant, whether it's a workshop, a special call meeting, whatever, it does provide for them to be on the agenda by contacting you.
It does, it does.
And I think that's, that's still open and available.
I respectfully disagree with some of our council members, maybe all of you, but...
We don't need to disagree.
But I mean, I want to hear, I want to hear from the citizens too.
Yeah.
But I go back to why we established workshops in the first place, and that's so that staff and council can work, can work through every issue that's on the agenda. If we need to bring someone in from, from the private sector, if you will, lack of a better term, to as a professional, as an expert on a particular area, we can invite those folks in.
Like I did that.
Absolutely.
He's on the agenda and then he's got this...
That's right.
And then you don't, you don't get, you don't get the citizenry out here, not having anything against public input.
No, no, I...
But once you work through the issues, and I know it might be kind of fast-actuous at times, because you're gonna work through something in a workshop, and then you're gonna get to the council meeting where you have citizen input on a particular subject, and you might get fifteen different opinions.
And then have to make a decision that night.
Well, you don't have to make a decision that night.
Well, or either to idea.
Well, a lot of it is a thinking process in a workshop too, you know, and so when you're trying to think and talk amongst one another, and you have citizens back here that are trying to, you know, I mean, maybe it's appropriate to, you know, make sure that you don't make a decision on items that really cost the citizen input. And then, you know, do as you normally do, if somebody wants to talk to you about it, you're available via phone callers, you know, there are ways to still get their input. I mean, I don't know, it's kind of a block.
It really is.
Well, I think, I'm never willing, but I think you're allowing in the workshops for people to speak for five minutes or not.
That is up to you.
That is.
One of them says regular meetings, one says regular meetings and workshops.
Well...
But it does say five minutes.
But that would be acceptable, yeah, to do like that, but I would, I would have to be all, you know, have...
But you really, and then every time, you really just need to make sure that you have some protocol and follow that protocol.
That's fine, that's fine.
Uh, yeah, we got the Georgia Pub Safety Police.
Georgia Public Safety.
Yeah, going on, the people, all of them are right next to them, if you want, if this meeting is open, if you can get it, hope, all police from all over state of Georgia.
I was gonna warn my students.
They, they ready, I mean, they are over there, from mother's seas.
So you're suggesting we stop inside of it?
Yeah, stop inside of it, yeah. They're at the Wiggins.
Their order is right now. Oh, we need to get over there, they...
There's a bunch of people out there. I see them, they're police.
Thank you, John.
We got roadblocks set up, so we don't have, we had, it's been a while. I mean, it's just, I just thought I'd mention that.
Yeah, thank you. Next item is number nine, the board report, is all?
Yes, sir, what I did with this board report is includes the balance for the year. We have some significant boards that are coming up, and I just wanted to remind you all of them. We still have a vacancy on the tree board, I believe that was from Victoria Watson, who designed, we have two vacancies on the Keget Beautiful. And Lyle Wise, his term is expiring November thirtieth for zoning board appeals. And then, of course, with DDA, we've got three board members, Carol Harper, Mary Lynn Nibbres, and she's here tomorrow, and Mr. Stones is here tonight. Planning and zoning Jan Wise. And then Keget Beautiful, we've got Clint Duncan plus Dan Lane Cook, so we have four positions on the tree.
So you've got, oh, I see, those are replacements, so those are terms right back.
And that's right, the tourism association is Julie Rogers. So we have some of those significant boards that we need to make sure we cover in the next couple of months.
Well, I know that you don't, do you contact those people to ask them if they would be interested in being reappointed, or do you not do that?
I do not do that.
That's what I thought, you do not do that.
I heard you say it's up to this council, nobody change.
So we could considerably reappoint someone and they could refuse? I mean, we can always do that.
I mean, you know, I can, I can send them an email, see if they're, you know, I don't want them to assume when I send an email or contact them that they're going to be reappointed. So I'm very careful to say, no, you want to continue to be considered reappointed.
Well, I think that...
I thought we talked about that, and they had to fill out a leave, this application, did we talk about that or remember that?
Well, I know that we were extending the applications for one to year. It's changed a few times still.
It has, you know, we used to have a committee, that's the last that I've done in a while, a board appointment committee. And at that point, we ask you not to, and we did it through the council's, you know, approval, not to contact people. Because we thought it would be better not to do that. But like, like these people down in County Development Park, or any one of those, if their term expires in this year, have they got to have an application filed for us to consider rejoining them?
Some of these boards have very specific requirements, some it's just, do you live in the city, some it's just, are you bringing, you know, kind of thing, so we have to be mindful of...
That's what it's like, if they give these applications, make sure they're qualified, whoever...
She does filter.
Yeah, exactly.
Sure, be sure.
And honestly, we've had one, I have had one application over the last thirty-four months, and that was from Shox, I just lost him. So it's a portal, and he doesn't live in the city.
But do you have others that are still in addition?
I have, I have got a misspinner for the library board, I went through them the other day. I do not have, I had nothing to put in this package, for y'all.
Let me, let me switch, Cindy, mention the library board. I will not be in the library board member from the city council after January. Actually, their meeting is the first Monday, so I'll still be in an office, it'll be swearing somebody else, they meet four times a year. And quarterly, and I guess I'll go, I will go in January maybe, because I guess I still...
Does it have to be a city council member, or it'd be someone appointed by city council?
It should be, a city council meeting.
We appoint people, there are a council...
Right, right, okay.
So that you are aware of what's going on, because you are planning that in the city. And it has to be somebody who will go to meetings at noon, it's the first Monday of the month, and it's four, is what it is.
We have run the request for boards and appointments, and it's that, we got it on government channel, we put it on our website from time to time.
Maybe we need to ask for a good news story about...
That's why I was looking around for the...
She's gone, but...
I will say this, Angie is gonna spotlight the Keget Beautiful board, she's gonna be talking with Houston and some of those board members next week. So that might be a good way to, and one of the things that she's going to be talking about is volunteers for that particular board, but we could certainly ask her to include in that story the fact that there are multiple city boards and commissions that need volunteers. And let's listen and roll it into that article, I feel like she would be very receptive to that. She's doing that as part of our cleanup initiative, we recognize those spotlights in the group, so she's gonna start with Keget Beautiful. Um, she's doing that as part of our cleanup initiative, so spotlight some of the groups, so she's gonna start with Keep It Beautiful.
Maybe you could send her a brief announcement of the boards.
I will do that.
Now, I don't know where I got it from, I don't see it on here. I thought that her filter term was up this day, so it needs to be sent.
No, sir.
I thought I had a piece of paper to send.
I can look, I thought you had to look.
Now, we should look, okay. But I thought you had some options for keeping that.
I do for DDA, I do have two applicants, but that's the only thing that they put, we don't have anybody, well, I mean, we do have these coming up, that's correct.
Yeah.
I do have two applicants.
You don't have anybody in land, planning, zoning, or the, or the tourism association? But we do for the Keep It Beautiful, or we don't?
No, we don't, we don't. And there, um, I don't think that, I, I don't wanna say they have a term, but I don't believe that the two that are expiring are willing to come back. That's why, we may just say Duncan McCluskey. So we may, there were four spots on that board, you know, that's who they have. Well, that, that is a large board, but.
That's which one?
Keep It.
It's the Keep, kept has two that have arguments.
So they're in Hager, Hager ditch, stay on.
It was on the culture, yeah. It's where you was at from, but, um, so, but, like you said, we'll, we'll have four for that workup, it is great.
Okay, are we gonna leave Duncan McCluskey?
Okay. She's in Magg, she's there.
Oh, okay.
He's, he's got some other boards he wants to do, that he'll.
Oh, okay. All right, Miss Roberts, thank you, um.
Would you like me to contact any of these folks, or do y'all wanna consider?
No, I can, keep it.
Just leave it as is?
Well, we have it for that pass.
Well, we, we have, not the two passes, but not the recent pass.
Not, not recent, not the last thirty days.
Yeah, well, if it does send out a message, it's gonna stay on. I know my mother couldn't stay on the pass, two terms on the library.
And that's because you, and that's another thing, the library board's vows of half-term limits, that's something we might think about for some of these boards.
Oh, yeah, I've got a lot I did on the term.
Shoot, we can't get up to serve.
I know, we're having our time now.
We need people to serve.
Look at that camera and say that, Chris, we need people to serve.
I think I said that once.
I know. People, people work.
All right, uh, my fair, want me to do run along, uh, up, check, number ten, Brothers Drive, the building's out, Hall River License, A one through Martin, it's on.
Yes, sir, this is an amended license, uh, the folks are, they now have a mall, and they want to add wine beverage package retail. Um, there are no violations, but we did a background check on them, so staff recommends approval of A one through Martin. Uh, Tiptokyo ha, is under new ownership, they have purchased the actual LLC, so it continues to be under that name, but the new owner, um, has two folks, one of them, the background was fine on, the other one had a DUI in two thousand and nine. But he has paid a fine, he spent one evening in jail, he's done sixty hours of community service, he's been through a risk reduction program, and he serves at twelve months probation. Um, this is his only violation, it was four years ago, and staff is of the opinion that, you know, he's paid his dues.
Is this, is this been sent on Virginia?
Yes, new ownership here, so we recommend approval of that as well.
And I, well, thank you, Ron.
That's, that's Larry.
Oh, I gotta stand up on a sit.
Okay, yeah, but look, the money for something, little grant application.
Yes.
This is the L M F, or this?
No, sir, what this is, is, um, we received a, um, a notice from the regional commission.
That's right.
About a, it's the Georgia Total Road Authority Grants. I don't know how they got in there, but if you look on the, on the application, it's Georgia Transportation Infrastructure Bank. We found out about it, and the maximum grant you can get is four million dollars. And, uh, by the way, I need to recognize Jessica Jones. She's the one who's ran right in the same force, and she's the one who put all this information together for us. Twentieth Street, uh, Roger Deal actually came to us, and he said, Larry, I think this is a really good project for this particular grant application.
Did you say Roger Deal?
Roger. As a matter of fact, he's already contacted Jessica, and he's gonna help her with it, uh, E S G's helped us with the application also. And, uh, that's, the E S G parts all figured into their contract, so it's kind of a, we treat them as an extension of staff, because that's exactly what they are. They come to our management team meetings, and I actually attended one of their safety meetings this morning, a part of it, like, too. Here or there, this grant, uh, we did an estimate to, um, resurface Twentieth Street, and I think you got that one from.
Yeah.
One time, uh, we have, now have, uh, are doing a new estimate on it to include crosswalks at all signalized intersections, repair of all the sidewalks out there that need to be repaired for their uneven or kicked up or whatever, single curb and gutter, building two inches deep, and, uh, and then resurfacing it, so that you don't have the, the asphalt taking up your curb and gutter. Uh, we estimate the resurfacing part alone, uh, and any additional ADA, the accessibility issues that we have to agree. Estimating, and I don't have a hard number for you yet, about one point two million dollars. Uh, the general thinking on these types of grants is that we would have to come up with a twenty to thirty percent match to even be competitive.
How much?
Twenty to thirty percent. About, what, uh, what's that, three, three hundred and sixty thousand? I want, now, that does not include moving any of the infrastructure that's in the road itself, the water and sewer lines, outside. And as you know, out there, it may not even be doable because of storm drain conflicts and what have you. But we're gonna look at it.
The right of way's tight up there, too.
There is no right of way left, the, the back of the sidewalk and the back of the curb on the north side, basically, it's the right of way line. There might be a few feet here and there, but for the most part, many feet. There's, uh, about forty feet, forty-four feet of asphalt, is that correct? Is that number, forty-four feet wide, eleven thousand feet long? If we were to move the, uh, water and or sewer lines, we would probably have to move those, take the sidewalk up and place them under the sidewalk, or do directional drilling to put that in. So, uh, that one point two million may rapidly increase to three, three million dollars conceivably. Don't know the exact number yet, but the question I have for council is, are we willing to find and keep our L M F funding, which, well, not this year's money, but next year's money, which is a hundred and sixty something thousand dollars, and of course, there's a thirty percent match on L M F, and then using some S P L O S P money to make, to do the match? Is that something, y'all will, if you're not willing to do that, then there's no sense in us applying for this grant, because we wouldn't be competitive.
What is the S P L O S P collection, I mean, what, how, is there money there in S P L O S P to cover that?
There is money in S P L O S P, but if you'll recall, the goal of council was to retire that city net debt as quickly as possible. Uh, I know that Miss Lois, she's over ready to kill me already, I can tell, but anyway, um, the, we will have to look at that part of money very closely, and see if there is money there that we can use to match this grant with.
What's the deadline for application?
October third first.
Is there any way, October third first, is there any way you consider doing part of Twentieth Street, like half of the month, a year, two, whatever, can do the infrastructure for that part?
You could, you could phase it in, but the only problem you have with that is you have the moving and move out cost, it costs more to do it that way than it does to do it all at one time.
I would really hate to see us do it without moving the infrastructure.
Yeah, you know, you mentioned that, you were part of the mission, and we were talking about it, got happy, and you said, what about the other part? And that's exactly right.
Can you get cost estimates on that, or?
We can break it down, uh, it'll be a cost per foot, it'll be a unit cost.
Okay.
So, I mean, we can break down the resurfacing, the curb, the other sixty nine, the curb, and.
I mean, you know, if you put the infrastructure down at the sidewalk, pulling up the sidewalk if you have to later, it's not like pulling up the street.
That's right, and I don't disagree with you.
Can you check and see if it's even feasible to do?
Waterlines are not a problem, water's in. And it's, it's normally the waterlines that gives a problem when we have a, an aperture.
Well, by October thirty one, we're not gonna move it, so you gotta have an answer.
No, this is not gonna be adopted tonight either.
No, this is not for adoption, I just wanna know if there's something you want us to go forward with, or.
That would be crazy not to go forward with it.
Well, I think we ought to at least go for it, and, uh, you know, Larry, you and I talked early on about this project, you know, and, and the phase thing, maybe all we can do right now. We'll look at the worst part of twentieth first, and do what we can, but I think we ought to at least attempt it.
What is in your view?
We're talking about, actually. For the hospital.
So for maybe Tiff down in Bagdad.
Oh, Rosella.
Yeah, I would say that's the worst part, which is in Marianna's district.
Right.
But, uh, the whole thing needs to be done, but I would say that's the worst part.
And this is the next fiscal year, folks.
Right.
This, this is your job.
Well, I think you ought to give us some cost on the infrastructure, but will you, will you, we certainly have a plan, I think.
I think so, too, could you break that down?
Do you need anything else from us?
No, I just think, I didn't, I wanted to bring that before y'all, because it does involve matching funds. Well, actually, you can apply, you can put the application in with no matching funds, but you won't get a permit. That was, uh, Jessica brought our attention this afternoon, that, uh, had it up there for the amount of matching funds we had in C V G grant, that's what really kicked us up there to allow the funding.
I have another question. To try to determine how much money in matching funds, thirty percent or one point two million is, but how much that would get you to do from like Tiff to the hospital, or one segment of Twentieth Street?
Well, we'll break the cost of the project down into phases, and then it's a thirty, twenty or thirty percent match of whatever the cost for that phase is.
Um, I know you had mentioned that the last time we talked about this too, that being such a major order, and getting people to the hospital, and, and the things that, is there an opportunity for the county to provide some involvement in this?
Yeah, boss.
What? The arterial routes through Tiff.
Like the arterial.
That's something to talk about after the discussion.
I would certainly be willing to approach Mr. Carter with that request, uh, but I would not count on it, excuse me.
But, you know, at some point, we need to look at arterial routes, what are they? I mean, I would say, they're not state highways that D M T is going to be, so most of them are going east to west.
Yes, for the most part, they're good. So we'll move forward with this, and like I said, the money will not be funded this year, but we do. We don't have to, the money will not have to be there this year, but we do have to put in the resolution that we are committed to making that match.
Well, we need to know how much that match would be. Yes, in second.
I will email you.
Email.
As soon as, as soon as we have the, uh, actual cost estimates done, I'll send that out to you in email form, and then I'll just, yeah, we'll just respond by to Tiffany, come to Jessica on it, so that we can keep it going.
Thank you, Larry.
Well, one thing you might need to do. One, one thing, just in your resolution, when you get some cost estimates, you've got all the areas, you don't have anything about being a phase thing, but you say, you know, for the conference series, so you may need to redo that resolution.
Oh, yeah, but.
Let's just, there, your consideration. Certainly, uh. The basis. All right, for your socializing pleasure.
Socialize, we're not social.
No, uh, there was, uh, some concern raised, uh, a meeting or so ago, it's best to be in, everybody, I can keep up with them, about customer service and the impact that, that our policies will have on the citizens of Tiff. Uh, we took that apart, went back to our customer service staff, and our, um, partners with E S G, they all sat down around the table, and looked at the current policies we have in place, and they all decided that we needed to make some changes. Uh, so we made some changes, uh, we will find out that cashiers have a radio available to them, uh, that we have someone from customer service that's kind of the liaison between E S G and the cashiers, and, and our meter readers in the field, so that if you come in to pay your bill, and we haven't reached physically turned off your water, then you will not be charged for a cut-off and reconnect with it. And this, uh, we tested, and this past, uh, cut-off day, uh, we got nineteen people that were not affected. In other words, we didn't have a sense of that, that there was, they weren't cut off, uh, there was no issues, everything went just smooth as silk. The, uh, system they put in place works great, so.
That's good, thank you, sir.
So, uh, so the hardcore people have really just played to the last minute to get in, uh, but in addition to that, you have, um, the numerous methods to pay your bill, what we have, we have the, you can telephone in, you can pay online, you can pay by credit card, you can pay by bank route, or if you're still of mind, you can come physically stand up at one of them and hand somebody your money, you can walk in the front door of City Hall, and you'll be in there with a pleasant, smiling customer service rep.
Dropbox.
And Dropbox, kind of like Dropbox, drive-through outside of the City Hall. All right, for your, uh, just, uh, quickly, the Central Regional Mission Annual Official Appreciation Evening Minimum Forum, we do that every year, that's October twenty second. And then Stafford Employee Appreciation Grill Out.
Wait, let me just encourage all of us in the county to try to be there, you got great food, great, you got the cemetery, the place like, you got all the folks to do what we do, but just really, I wish we could have a hundred percent.
I'm sorry, I'll be out of town, I'm due up to the ten.
Okay, all right, Larry, go ahead.
Uh, October twenty-third, Stafford, uh, City Employee, Employee Appreciation Grill Out, about complex, that's from eight to nine A M. Uh, Stafford Company is gonna come cook breakfast for the, all of the city employees, and I'm sure they wouldn't mind if it, if Mr. Willmont and council showed up and had breakfast that morning.
Will grill with Willmont.
Eight to nine A M at the complex. Uh, Celebrate Royal Georgia Conference, I think that's when Governor Deal's coming down, and that is on October thirtieth from nine to three P M, you need to sign up, get with, uh, Jessica, she's got the form. It's a twenty dollar fee, that includes the breakfast and the, uh, homegrown country cooking lunch, or whatever it is.
Georgia lunch.
Georgia grown lunch. And then, uh, G M A District Eleven Fall Meeting, that is Wednesday, number twenty, at Pearson Center. Uh, that's when G M A comes down, and they have a listening session, and they get the input, and y'all will all meet at those, and whatnot. And that's kind of it for this, uh, this workshop, Vona has one, uh, announcement to make. And then, uh, November four, City Manager Up Dave, it's gonna be a treat for you, I think you're gonna really appreciate this.
We had the Kipoff Meeting for the senior center on Tuesday, um, to get that expansion project underway and renovation, and around the table, of course, was the city staff, but also Bob Robertson, who's our consultant, um, our architect was there, and also Robert Compton from D C A. So, um, out of sixty-one applications, we went with forty-one, that made it through it. So we're, we're excited about that, um, very few centers, senior centers get funded anymore, it's usually infrastructure projects.
And we're using, uh, S P L O S P, I was gonna say.
We're using S P L O S P, yes, sir.
Well, thank you, Ron.
And all donations by the mayor are very appreciated.
Good, that'll be pennies on the top. Well, between stands and currents, of course, I'd like y'all all very well.